Good evening, everyone, and welcome to another episode of Turn Left. I am your host, Indiana's own Dana Black, coming to you live. Yes, all the way live from Black Pearl Studios, where we talk about Indiana politics from the left side of things. Well, okay, so this was a very emotional week in our General Assembly. You know, you don't question the desire in the heart of our Democratic candidates and elected officials in that General Assembly, because they give their heart and their soul for their communities only to watch people who may or may not live in their communities decide what the community wants, they don't want for that community. And I'm speaking of two particular communities, and that would be Gary and Indianapolis. Now, what do those two cities have in common? Well, both of them have a very, very high concentration of people of color. Now, I'm not trying to say that Republicans in the General Assembly are looking at it in a racial perspective, but I will say that both of those cities are heavily Democratic. They vote Democrats, vote for Democrats at a much higher clip. And so when Republicans don't like something that the community has decided they want for themselves by electing the type of leadership they want for their community, they will do things at the State House to buck the trend. Well, Dana, what are you talking about? Well, first of all, Gary and Indianapolis can't vote for their own judges. I know, right? Ain't that crazy? Every other place can. The Indianapolis City County Council is the only council in the entire state that does not have at-large seats. They stripped those away. And now there's two pieces of legislation that have been floating through the General Assembly that were basically taking away local control. One has a decent ending, and the other one, well, not so much. So we're going to start with the bad news first. WFYI reports, "Local communities in Indiana won't be allowed to sue the gun industry even for illegal actions under legislation approved by the Senate today. HB 1235 is aimed at ending a lawsuit by the city of Gary against gun manufacturers and sellers that date back to 1999." Senator Aaron Freeman, this will be a theme, "The bill's sponsors said, 'The issue is simple. It's a 25-year-old situation,' Freeman said. 'There's other municipalities that could do this, and I think only the state of Indiana should.'" Under the bill, the Indiana Attorney General is the only government authority that could bring lawsuits against the gun industry. Current Attorney General Todd Rakita has said he'll never do so." Of course not. The Attorney General's office disagrees that the interpretation of Rakita's comments, however, it said he does not support the Gary lawsuit, which the office describes as "a public nuisance cause based upon lawful activity." Gary officials and attorneys involved in the lawsuit disagree with the characterization of the case. They argue the suit isn't about lawful activity, but about unlawful actions by gunmakers and sellers. Senator Greg Taylor pleaded with his colleagues not to take away local communities' right to protect their citizens. "We are choosing an industry over our people," Taylor said. The Senate passed the bill 33 to 15. It now heads back to the House, which can vote to send it on to the governor or take the bill to a conference committee for further work. So check this out. Remember when there was that opioid crisis? And municipalities were able to file lawsuits against the pharmaceutical business that dumped all that nasty opioids into our communities that created an incredible health crisis? Now, we ain't gonna talk about the fact that when it was crack and black folks was getting locked up. We not even gonna go there. But here you have one industry where municipalities can sue. But here's another municipality who can't sue this particular industry. So when we had the opioid crisis in Scott County and other Republican-led counties, they can sue and get paid. Now, granted, other counties were able to take advantage of the opioid lawsuit, including democratically-led counties. But now you're saying that the gun manufacturers cannot be held accountable. I have a major issue with this because, again, you're taking away local control. Now, some halfway decent, good news. The Indy Star reports, "Senate Bill 52, the bill banning dedicated lanes in Indianapolis for a year and potentially derailing Indigo's bus line, is dead. This means Indigo can proceed with its plan through with some changes. House Speaker Todd Houston, in a statement, said, 'He reached an agreement with city and Indigo officials to drop the bill in exchange for Indigo prioritizing the maintenance of two lanes for traffic flow in each direction in its blue line plan. This may mean fewer dedicated transit lanes than originally planned. In meeting with Indigo and city officials, we were able to find common ground that included updating the blue line plans to prioritize traffic flow while still making improvements along Washington Street to better accommodate the mass transit system. By keeping at least two lanes of traffic flow going both east and west whenever possible, we can limit congestion and the negative impact on local businesses.'" Indianapolis officials, including Mayor Joe Hawkes, said, "Quickly released statements praising the outcome. I extend my thanks to Indiana's House Speaker Todd Houston for working with Indigo and the city to come to this commitment," Hawkes said. "I am grateful for the many community members who continue to show up and advocate for this transformative investment for our city." And I might add, the author of SB 52, again, Senator Freeman. So Senator Freeman, what does he have against local control? Now, Senator Freeman was a city-county counselor at one point, so maybe he still thinks he's in a city-county council role, but he is not. And where is that home rule that they love so much? Just let Joe Biden pass something that the General Assembly doesn't like. You can best believe they are going to shut it down. But more importantly, this speaks to the fact that if the General Assembly doesn't like something that the constituents in a particular municipality have voted for, like they did with the dedicated blue line for the mass transit in Indianapolis, because we, in 2016, voted to raise taxes to put the blue line, and actually, it's a three-tier system, in place to improve mass transit. We already, there's already laws on the books that ban any type of rail system, but we have over almost a million people in Indianapolis, and if you include the donor counties, we're over 1.7 million people. For a municipality for as large as we are, we deserve to have a better way to move people around. But these clowns, these guys, feel like what we are doing in our city is no longer valuable, and they should be able to overrule it whenever they want. It's problematic on many levels, and guys, if we want to fix this situation, you're gonna have to show up, because we're not gonna be able to change hearts and minds. We gotta change seats. The only way that we can get the General Assembly out of our business when we have local control, right, is to elect more Democrats so we can do something about that supermajority. Because they will come after everything that you hold near and dear. And if you don't think it's true, look what just happened with the in vitro fertilization in Alabama. Missouri just issued a bill that said if a teacher assists a young person with social transitioning, not medical transitioning, but social transitioning, they could be deemed, what do you call it, on the predator list. These are the things that these folks are doing, all the while not governing, not offering any real solutions to real issues at all. So all of this is problematic, but the only way we can fix this, y'all, is to show up at the polls, get galvanized, support good candidates, donate to good candidates, help them out, knock some doors, be a volunteer. And if you can't do any of those things, could you maybe buy some water or maybe just show up to be some moral support? Because it's gonna take all of us to flip seats. It's not gonna happen because we hope and pray it happens. You have to find a candidate that speaks to your value system and get involved, time, talent, or treasure. All right, and because this is the last day, February 29th, happy leap year, of Black History Month, I'm gonna, you know, talk about somebody who represents everything that I stand for. We're gonna talk about Sherri D. Harris. In 1991, Sherri D. Harris was the first out Black lesbian elected to public office in the United States. This also gave her the distinction of being the first African-American woman on the Seattle City Council in Washington State. Harris was born on February 27th, 1957, in New York, New Jersey, to a single mom, Dorothy Harris. An only child, she grew up in the community's ghetto. She recalled witnessing the 1967 riots there. Dorothy Harris became a part of society and an active community involvement. Harris received a Bachelor's of Science degree in human factors engineering from the New Jersey Institute of Technology in 1978. She moved to Seattle shortly thereafter. As an engineer, she worked for Pacific Northwest Bell Telephone Company and Boeing. She engaged extensively in neighborhood activism through such organizations as Maple Leaf Community Club, Northwest Women's Law Center, Association of Lesbian Professionals of Seattle, and Greater Seattle Business Association. She was appointed to five city boards and commissions in the 1980s. In 1991, Harris ran for political office in Seattle. She became the first candidate endorsed by the then newly-founded Gay and Lesbian Victory Fund, a national organization supporting LGBTQ persons in politics. By a 70% majority, Harris defeated the 24-year incumbent Sam Smith, who had been the first African-American elected to the city council in Seattle. She served as an at-large city council member from 1992 to 1995. Harris chaired the city council's Housing, Health, and Human Services and Education Committee, and served on the Transportation and Utilities Committee. She sponsored or co-sponsored several gay-positive initiatives. She also helped to raise over $1 million to fight anti-gay ordinances in the state. So guys, anything is possible. She was the first. Y'all give it up for Ms. Sherri D. Harris. Not only is she an African-American, not only she is a woman, but she was an out lesbian holding office. And I salute her, and I applaud her, and she can lead the way for so many others to see and be, because sometimes if you can't see it, you don't know you can be it. But there she is, the first openly-out LGBTQ-plus Black woman elected to office in these United States of America. So happy Black History Month, and this will be a great transition to Women's Month. Yes, I'm gonna be talking about amazing women next month. But first, let's give a shout out to my sponsors, Bohm's Unique Boutique. Today's show is brought to you by Bohm's Unique Boutique. Click on the QR code. And for all Turn Left listeners, you can get a 10% discount on your order by using the code DEMOCRAT. Be sure to visit www.bohmsuniqueboutique.com. Democrats, are you looking for an affordable content creation option? If so, look no further than Black Pearl IT Solutions and Black Pearl Studios. Indiana's own Dana Black is providing many of the communication wraparound services any democratic organization needs. No matter the size of the budget, Indiana's own has you covered. Just scan the QR code or visit wwwblackpearl_its.com. All right, all right, all right, that's my rant. You know, I got to get it in every now and then, because, you know, they've been getting on my nerves at the State House, and so I just gotta let them have it. But now we got my guest. I'm super excited, because, you know, all politics are local. And this year, we have a lot of county elections. So you need to know who's on your ballot. I know that the noise is at the top of the ticket, but you need to find out who is gonna be deciding the fiscal blah-blah-blahs in your county. So first up, running for Dearborn County Council at Large, Mr. Hunter Collins. Mr. Hunter Collins, welcome to the show.
Hey Dana, thanks so much for having me. I appreciate the opportunity to come on here.
I love it, I love it. And look, he's the first time on my show, but he's an old hack at this political thing. Y'all give it up for my second guest, running for Monroe County Commissioner, Steve Volin. Steve, welcome to the show.
Thank you so much. I'm glad to be here, delighted to talk with you today.
I love it, I love it. Hey, guys, was there anything in my rant that you wanted to comment on? Hunter, we're gonna start with you.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, like you had mentioned, all politics are local, right? We, the biggest changes that we can make at a lot of points are in our local political scene. Changes start at the bottom and can work their way up. And, you know, I think the fact that the Indiana GOP is working so hard to mitigate the control that our local municipalities have, especially those that tend to lean Democratic, I mean, it's just, it just goes to show how desperate they are to hold on to power and to not get actual work done.
That's it.
So.
And the work they're getting done is harmful.
Absolutely.
Steve, you got anything?
Uh, where do I start? I was born in Gary.
Not yet, no. Do you have anything on my rant?
Well, you ranted about Gary and Indianapolis.
Oh, okay, I thought you was giving me a bio, my bad.
No, no, I'm saying, I saw all the dysfunction growing up up there. You know, I had a lot of thoughts, but anymore, the one thing that I think I disagree with is that Tip O'Neill's statement is accurate anymore. I think that in the era of Trump and this authoritarian Republicans, all politics is national right now. That, you know, that Hunter is right, we need to start at the local level. We need to fight for every level of government. But right now, we're dealing with people who don't even agree on basic facts. You know, like they're just, there's no, the local media has eroded. So like, people don't really have reliable sources to find out what's happening locally. And so they just listen to whatever they hear, and that tends to be national stuff. We've seen in every election that more people turn out for presidentials than not, for Senator, for Governor. But, you know, cities in Indiana still are elected on an off-year. Like, there was a city election last year, and there were maybe 8,000 people who voted in a community of 80-plus thousand for mayor, and that was a record turnout.
Oh, jeez.
So, you know, like, anymore, we have to face the fact that a lot of people aren't listening to anything local, and that makes the job even harder.
It does, it does. And I'm glad you guys are on the ballot, because, you know, it can be, listening to what's happening in the world right now can get depressing, but we need good candidates to put their names on the ballot. So Hunter, tell the people who you are and where you come from.
Yeah, so, name's Hunter Collins. I was born in Kentucky, raised by a single mother who raised me and my two brothers. Grew up in a very non-political household, so I really didn't get into, you know, learning much about politics or government until I became, you know, an adult, really. But in my adult life, I moved out here to Indiana. I currently live in Aurora, which is kind of the little brother to Lawrenceburg, right on the Ohio River. Absolutely love it here. The moment that I moved here, I immediately told myself, "There's no way I can live anywhere else," basically. And this, you know, this is my home. I'm proud to live here, and I live here with my lovely fiancee, Haley, and then I have an adopted, and then I have an adopted daughter. Her name's Johanna. She just turned eight last Saturday, so just got through celebrating her birthday. Yeah.
So was there something in your upbringing that made you want to get involved in community service before you decided to run for politics?
Yeah, so, growing up, I was very involved in my local church. My mom, you know, we would cook meals for the elderly and inform in our local church. We would, you know, volunteer there to, you know, help with different events or things like that. So that has always been a very critical part of my upbringing. You know, it's something where giving back was always ingrained in me as a child. And so as I grew up, I looked for more and more ways that I could express that. And at a certain point, you know, really around 2016 is when I realized that, you know, with the way that the world was going, I wanted to help direct, you know, I wanted to help make changes that could really positively affect people instead of the harmful changes that I saw being made. So that was really a turning point for me, but really, it's been all throughout my, you know, entire upbringing. The way that my mom raised me was always to, you know, my mom would give the shirt off her back to anybody. She's an amazing woman and incredibly generous, and that's how she raised me, and she, you know, instilled those values.
Sound like she did a good job. Steve?
I like to thank so.
Okay, Steve, tell the people who you are and where you come from.
Like I said, I was born in Gary, but since 1986, I've lived in Bloomington. I just finished a 20-year stint on the Bloomington City Council. I represented a district in the city that has so many students going to IU that I had, I can claim that I've had bigger parties, I've thrown bigger parties at my house than voted for me and my opponent the last time we had a competitive election, because students have intensity not to vote. And so it's hard to represent people who don't really know that you exist. Like, 2% voter turnout is kind of low, but it did accord me a chance to help run the city, which Bloomington is about 80,000 people, literally half of them are students at IU. And so I've done a lot of other things too. You know, I've lived here for a long time. I started the first internet company in Bloomington in 1994, that provided access to the internet, yeah. So you can blame me for all the ills of the internet in Bloomington, at least. And now I'm running for county commissioner. So Bloomington is the only actual city in Monroe County. It's more than 50% of the population. It's like 60% of the population. There's one town, Ellisville, and one village, Steinsville, that are about 7,7,000 more people. But Bloomington is the, by far, the largest city in Monroe County. And, you know, the basics of it are that I'm running to help manage the whole metropolitan area.
I love it. And so what got you involved? I mean, 20 years, bro, that's like, you know, that's a...
It's foolishness. I usually tell people like Hunter, my condolences, I mean, congratulations, you know, because running for office, holding office is sort of, is thankless at best. But what got me involved, I have to say, was, well, it was the cuckoos. In the year 2000, there were cuckoos, yes. So I was working in my office, middle of the night, one night, only person on the square. I was on the courthouse square downtown Bloomington, had an office, and I liked working there. And I was working at night, and then I heard a sound that wouldn't go away. And I wandered out to the street, and someone had installed audible crosswalks for blind pedestrians, and they were going off really loud every 30 seconds all night long. Not only were there no pedestrians there, there were no cars. I mean, it was just completely empty, and that was because, at the time, nobody lived in the square. But, I mean, no one would have allowed that in their neighborhood. And so I got involved and actively said, "What can we do to turn these off?" And the next thing I know, I'm involved in politics. So I blame it on the cuckoos, and I think that explains a thing or two. It did take me a long time to get them to turn the cuckoos down. Nothing happens quickly in government, that's for sure.
So Hunter, was there one thing that made you say, "I'm running for office"?
You know, it's hard to say one thing in particular. You know, there's just so many things. Really, the biggest first step for me to even begin considering this was when Trump was elected in 2016. I was watching that election like a hawk. I was terrified that entire election year, because I just, I kept seeing what was happening. And it was really the catalyst that made me, one, pay attention a lot more, and, two, was the first, you know, stepping stone, I'd say, to convince me that, yes, I need to run for office, so.
I get it, because for me, I mean, it's always something. So for Steve, it was the cuckoo. For you, it was the orange menace. And for me, it was riffra. Like, I just, y'all not finna keep on telling me I'm a second-class citizen. Indiana's own Dana Black, Turn Left, I am talking to Hunter Collins, who's running for Dearborn County Council at Large, and Steve Volin, who's running for Monroe County Commissioner. And if you guys, listen, if you like what they're talking about, could you please donate to their campaigns? Could you please? The link is right there. Go ahead and click on the link. $5, $10, become a recurring donor. But it's not easy, it's not, you know, it's not cheap to run for office. So anything that you can provide these candidates to help them get elected, please consider donating. Guys, there's always an issue that's happening at this point of the year or this cycle that has been impacting the community. And you're out talking to folks and trying to figure out what their needs and wants are. Steve, what are you hearing? You know, you're going from Bloomington as a city-county counselor, and now you're going into the county council. What are you hearing from people in the county that they want and see and need as far as a change is concerned in Monroe County?
Okay, well, there's a lot to unpack there. Let me just start with, I'm, the city-county council's only Indianapolis. Bloomington just has a city council, and I'm running for county commissioner. Hunter's running for county council. And it might help to explain the difference. In the city, the mayor is the executive, the council's legislative. So the council writes laws, mayor has to carry them out. But the mayor forms the budget. The county, the city council cannot spend money. They can only authorize the mayor to spend money. That's the city. In the county, the commissioners are the executive and the legislative. They write laws and they enforce them. What they don't have is money. What Hunter's running for is the county council, where all they do is fiscal. All they do is set the budget for all the separately-elected offices in the county. And even the commissioners have to go to the county council to get money to do whatever they need to do. So that's an important thing to make a distinction.
And my bad, slip of the tongue.
No, 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 it's super confusing, and nobody really gets it. And I'm gonna spend a lot of time just explaining what a commissioner does and what, like, a commissioner's like the co-mayor of the county.
Okay.
But if there's one issue that I hear more than anything, it is the high cost of housing, period. Bloomington is one of the most popular places in the state that's also not kept up with the demand for housing. Our rents are through the roof. It's impossible for anybody to find a starter home. The median listing price of a house in, of a housing unit in Monroe County, the median listing price is $400,000. $400,000. So, you know, we're not building enough housing. And there's a very strong and loud current of NIMBYism. Please don't, don't change our city, don't expand housing. We like things the way they are. That's said by people who got theirs. It's sort of a God bless the child attitude towards that loud homeowners have about their community. Don't do anything, I got mine. I don't want anybody else to come after me. But we need housing of every kind, at every level, from people who are homeless to people who are looking to downsize or to upsize. There aren't any choices anymore. That's because we're not building enough, because we're too locally restrictive on what we allow to get built. So what I'm running for is to try to get the county to realize that the city isn't the only place that has to accommodate newcomers. It has to be a metropolitan area thing. We need smaller lots, smaller houses, less room for cars, more room for more housing units. That's the basic thing that I'm running about.
So I do know about, in Monroe County, you guys have been having some back and forth about the location of the new jail. Has that?
That's the second biggest thing I'm running about, yes. The current commissioners are looking for a place to put a jail, to build a new jail, because the current one has been a human rights violation for 15 years. And why they've taken so long to do something about it is mind-boggling. I think they're trying to, the perfect is the enemy of the good for them. They're trying to build a 25-acre justice campus. Well, I saw what Lake County did to Crown Point, okay? The jail and the courthouse used to be the center of town, then they moved it out in the middle of nowhere, and it made it harder for anybody to get there. You know, the commissioners now want to move the jail to a point outside the city completely, even though this city, the city of Bloomington, was founded in 1818 by the commissioners to be the county seat. And the courthouse has been a centerpiece of the city the entire time. And the justice building's just a few blocks north. But they want, and it's a building in terrible condition, it needs to be replaced. But they think the only way they can do that is by building outside the city. They've tried lots of different locations. They pointed fingers at city officials about how they can't, and it's too hard. But the bottom line is, they don't understand cities, they don't like cities, and they don't like the complexity of cities. We need to keep our jail downtown, that's what the judges say, that's what the prosecutors say, that's what the public defenders say, that's what the probation officers say, that's what the county elected officials all say. If you keep the jail close to services and to other county offices, it makes it easier for people who are in the justice system or people who care about people in the justice system to access the services. to access the services that they need. You move it out to the middle of nowhere, everything gets more expensive. Every, the carbon footprint blows up. You, you, everything has to be accessed by car. It's just the wrong thing to do altogether. The jail needs to stay downtown. And the jail needs to be made more humane without, I mean, putting it in twenty-five acres in the middle of suburbia is not the way to do it.
No, it's not. So what are you seeing, Hunter? And I apologize, you're running for council, and Volin is running for commissioner. And I'm gonna get that straight. Um, so what, what are folks telling you, um, as you're talking to them, as a, the, the issue, um, that, that, that they want to change?
Well, the biggest, biggest issue in our county right now is our public safety network. Uh, we are, uh, we have made a ton of headlines for very bad reasons regarding our public safety network here in Dearborn County. Um, it is taking people in some of the farther municipalities in the county upwards of thirty to forty minutes on average to get an ambulance out to them. When they have an EMS building two to three blocks away. Um, but what, what's happened is our county has not funded these EMS systems. Uh, they're running off volunteer forces, you know, so they're not actually fully staffed. Uh, the town of Dillsborough only has two volunteers right now. And you need, at a minimum, two people to run a single call.
Hmm.
So, you know, God forbid that two people need help at once.
Right.
You end up with uh, Dillsborough having to call for help from Aurora, where I live, which is about twenty minutes away, or even Lawrenceburg, which is, you know, about a half hour to forty minutes away. So it, we run into this issue where people are in unnecessary danger. The county leaders have not done their part in ensuring that these EMS systems stay strong and even stay afloat. Because right now, Dillsborough EMS, from my understanding, is getting ready to go under.
Oh, my god.
They just cannot continue operations. So it's this issue of consolidating our public safety network. There's even talks throughout the county of the county wanting to dissolve the city of Aurora's police department and consolidate it into a county police department. So that's, these are big issues for people that, you know, want to feel safe in our communities, especially there's a um, pretty significant elderly population, uh, senior population that lives in Dearborn County. And when they need help, they need help. And so that's the biggest issue that I'm seeing. And probably the second biggest issue is infrastructure. Our county roads are just really struggling right now. There's a lot of work that needs to be done. And once again, the county just has not been allocating our funds well. We have a casino in Lawrenceburg that generates millions of dollars of revenue for the county every month. Yet, that money is routinely wasted on frivolous projects such as a five-million-dollar courthouse renovation, which pretty much the only thing that it did was give the county council and commissioners a little bit nicer offices. Uh, you know, and you've got all these issues of just
Right, they, they
Oh, of course. Who needs ambulances? We need a nicer office.
That makes a whole lot of sense. Grandma fell down and she can't get up, but you sitting real pretty in your chair.
That's right.
You know, and I'm, I feel, I'm, I'm, now I'm kicking myself, because there was a, a bill that was looking to address EMS services floating through the chamber, the general assembly, and I did not pay attention enough to it, to, to give you anything on it. And now I'm kicking myself, because I'm like, dang, I wish I had listened.
Yeah, that bill actually, uh, I, I'm pretty sure I know which bill you're talking about. It was basically a bill that allowed uh, counties to set aside uh, certain um, kinds of taxes to dedicate to EMS systems. And that bill did end up passing. And what happened in our county was last year, the council got together, had the leaders of these different EMS departments come together um, to create this new taxing system for our EMS system. They did that, put about three-point-two million dollars, if I remember correctly, into a account for our EMS system, and nothing has happened.
Really?
Yes, so yeah, I mean, when you've got EMS departments that are about to go under, because they just do not have the funding, it's, what, what's it doing? We've got millions of dollars that are just doing nothing. So that's a major issue right now.
Guys, I'm hearing, you know, something very similar um, from both of you in your county commu, you know, electeds. And to be, to be clear, Monroe County is pretty much, you know, they're, the, all the commissioners are Democrats. So
That's correct.
So Monroe County is a little different in that uh, Democrats fight amongst themselves. But what I'm hearing is that those that are in elected office aren't necessarily looking at things from a, a broader perspective and, 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 and the fact of how do these services directly impact the constituents? Can you speak, it, it, can you speak to why it is important, and both of you, please? Um, why is it important for an elected official, you know, yes, you have to make hard decisions. But why is it important to put the constituent first and the people who need those, those services first? And I don't care who goes first. Just don't take too long.
Yeah. So, you know, what, what I consistently say is that real change requires a partnership between citizens and their representatives. None of us can do this alone. None of us can make real positive change alone. We need to hear from our constituents to know what these issues are and to get different ideas and opinions on how we can fix them. Um, the collective mind is much stronger than one single person.
Love it.
When we come together as a community, that's when we can really make positive changes. And so my, you know, a huge part of my campaign is getting out and talking to people. Uh, we only have one Democrat on our uh, on our county council.
Hmm.
So it's, it's, you know, a Republican supermajority, and none of them like to get out and actually talk to constituents. And if they do, it's in a very superficial way. They've been doing this for a long time. They know they have power and they're very comfortable. Um, and that was one reason I was really excited to run, because I wanted to kind of throw a wrench in that for them, you know? I want them to get, I want them to get a little scared. I'm a young, fresh voice in this, in our county uh, who is calling out the things that are not being taken care of properly. So you just hearing from people, I've had, I've heard different concerns from a lot of different citizens, and there's things that I have not even thought about before, you know?
Mm-hmm.
But it was a very personal issue to that voter.
Yeah.
And it was a really wonderful conversation getting to hear, you know, what concerned them. And it put things on my radar.
I love it. Steve?
Uh, here, it's a little different. First of all, I will say that Democrats and Republicans will agree on one thing. In a one-party town, the infighting can be a whole lot worse than when there's a two-party system like
My god, yes.
I, I'm sure that Hunter can probably find Republicans who hate the fighting amongst themselves, you know?
Oh, my goodness, yes.
Yeah, yeah. Now, uh, in Monroe County, the question is more a matter of who belongs here? Who should have the say? Who is a constituent? Because the first thing that you find in the city of Bloomington is that non-students don't believe that students should count. They don't believe they should vote. They don't think that they belong here. But that's not the way that you, the only measurement that the country uses to determine where somebody lives and should vote is uh, are they a citizen? Are they of age? And where, where are they, where are they living more than half the time?
Yeah.
What the, the census calls their usual residence.
Mm-hmm.
So back in twenty twenty-one, we had uh, the m- mother of all battles over uh, the administration proposing that uh, duplexes be allowed by right throughout the city. Uh, there was a hue and cry from every single family homeowner in the core neighborhoods. And among other things that they claimed was that everyone thinks like them. Everyone believes that this is wrong, and why are you even considering this? And I had to point out that uh, there are forty thousand students in this community, none of whom are in this debate. So I know that you're not speaking for everyone.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Uh, but it's not just that. We also have a big homeless problem. We have a problem with people who are experiencing extreme poverty.
Hmm.
And uh, we do occasionally get uh, other communities, not even occasionally, it's, it's quite a bit, of other communities sending their wretched to us, one with a one-way bus ticket, because there are a lot of organizations that provide services in Monroe County and in Bloomington. But I mean, there but for the grace of God, go we. If you say that this person doesn't, I mean, I remember when I first ran for office, I talked to some party officials, uh, because they wanted to get to know me. It was my first, this is two thousand and three.
Mm-hmm.
And they asked me, how long have you been in the community? And I said seventeen years. And I thought that would be the end of it. And I'd noticed that they looked at each other, and I go, what? And the one person said, well, I've been here twenty-five years. She's been here her whole life. And I remember thinking, when does the statute of limitations run out on being an interloper? Okay, so when you can claim that not everybody should count and not everybody's here, you know, it opens the question of who deserves to be a constituent, who deserves to be served. Um, and uh, you know, I have tried to take the, the attitude that everyone who is here deserves it. And we should not be making a distinction about uh, anybody based on age or where they came from before.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so like, it, it's hard to answer that question, because it has to start with, well, uh, who counts? And unfortunately, that is the kind of attitude that is uh, independent of party.
Hmm.
That you'll find people who got theirs, uh, who are comfortable, like the Republicans in Dearborn County. Uh, and who, they don't, they can't relate, for example, to the people who are trying to buy a home, or the people who are paying incredible rents, who have no hope of buying a home.
Mm-hmm.
If we're not building housing for those people, uh, then basically, the, the the citizenship, this constituency of people who have owned homes for a while is greater. It outweighs the other people who've been here for less time.
Wow. And you know, I, I, the first time I went to uh, uh, Bloomington City County Council, or it's, I'm sorry, I live in
Just city council, I know, I know.
This is a habit. Um, the city council, um, a- and again, you guys are both running for county commissioner, county council. But the first time I saw an all-Democratic council meeting in Bloomington, it lasted a ridiculous amount of time. And I was like, not only was I offended, I was offended for your constituents. I mean, the idea that you would have a meeting that lasts to midnight, when, when you're
Oh, I passed, yeah.
I know about the one to three o'clock in the morning. I was mad about that one. I was mad. I don't even live there, and I was mad. But that speaks to, you know, the, the infighting, you know, everybody, because I used to say all the time, what the heck are y'all fighting about? Y'all on the same side?
Well, that, that's actually a different thing. The problem is, in Bloomington, uh, we allow everyone to have public comment.
Hmm.
And we don't put any restrictions on, except for like a time limit, how long you can speak. But every time there's an amendment, you get to speak again. And my predecessors, the people I worked with before I left office, refused to face this problem. So we had a problem of too many people wanting to speak. It's a sign the community cares.
Sure.
What the council wouldn't do was limit how much time we spent in the meeting. Uh, we did have a record meeting that went nine hours, and it was an obscenity. And based on that, I wrote an ordinance that I called the Reasonable Hour Ordinance that said that any two members could end the meeting after midnight. But I mean, the idea that midnight is a reasonable hour, when six-thirty is when we start
Yeah.
uh, should give anyone pause that we're, we're doing something wrong, you know? We're not respecting public time by letting meetings go to our, after a while, you know what people think. You don't need to hear every single person's public comment. That's why some cities let people sign up for public comment, rather than, and they limit it to we're only gonna have twenty minutes of public comment or two hours of public comment.
You know, you mentioned something here, and I, and I had forgotten you, and actually, you were the one that actually wrote the ordinance, you know? Hunter's, Hunter's new, he's, you know, he's gonna win, and he's gonna need to learn how to write ordinance. And I'm gonna ask the question for Hunter, and then Hunter, I want you to engage in this conversation. Talk about the process of getting an ordinance, uh, you know, put together that addresses a need in the community. Steve, you the one that's done it.
Well, yeah, I'm the one who's done it. I mean, Hunter is not gonna have to write ordinances. Hunter's gonna have to write budgets.
Budgets, oh.
The county commissioners write the ordinances that they enforce. It's weird. It's Indiana. It's weird, all right? But Hunter, Hunter will not have to write words. He'll have to write numbers. He's gonna have to figure out budgets that will uh, enable, you know, the, they have the power of the purse, and every office in the county, up to the ca, commissioners, has to come to the county council for the money. And so he has to come up with a, a way to, and the counties, one, a, a friend of mine here who works in county government said, cities do what citizens want them to do. Counties do what things, what needs to be done. And there's very little discretionary money in a county budget, like maybe our, our parks program is, is discretionary. But most of it is, you have to fund the judges, you have to fund the jail, you have to fund the sheriff, you have to fund everything. And the, and his challenge is gonna be figuring out, well, where do we put the money? I wish we had a casino to have that extra money to uh, to put this stuff, but
Oh, no, no, they're not putting a casino in Bloomington.
I'm kidding. I don't actually
I'm gonna switch up a little bit. So budget conversations can be tough. I mean, because everybody wants their piece of the pie, but nobody should have the piece of the pie. That's how it usually turns out. But Hunter, when you win, there's a possibility that you are gonna continue to be in a superminority. Talk about your leadership style and how you plan to, like, cross the aisle and negotiate, and what that looks like. So people can understand how you will work with uh, the other side of people that you disagree with.
Yeah. Um, so another important aspect of myself is I'm actually a uh, union organizer for the Amazon Labor Union at uh, KCVG, uh, that's Amazon's largest air hub in the world. Uh, we are currently uh, in it, uh, we're currently on a union drive right now. We're making really great progress, and uh, we actually just drafted our constitution for our union, which is the final step before we actually file for an NLRB election. Um, I sat on the committee for drafting that constitution. That's uh, something that I'm very proud about. And I was actually tasked with drafting the uh, our leadership system.
Okay.
There was a, there was a lot of debate on whether or not uh, our union should have a traditional uh, presidential hierarchy, or whether we should try something new. And I personally believed that we're building a different kind of union. So we need to try something a little bit unorthodox, but that would be more representative of our, of our members. So I had actually uh, proposed a departmental council system. Um, there's a lot of departments in uh, Amazon Air. And a lot of those departments go very much underrepresented by Amazon. Uh, I wanted to give a voice to those departments, even though I work, I, I work at Amazon Air as my full-time job. Even though I work in one of the biggest departments in the building, I know the struggle of those smaller departments and not having their voices heard. Uh, so I wanted to make sure that they had a voice in our union that was strong. So uh, I wrote up this, I wrote up our leadership structure the way that I kind of envisioned it. And I was met with a lot of backlash, actually.
Hmm.
Um, people who had been in the union drive since the very beginning, I joined on a little bit later. But people who had been in it since the very beginning were vehemently opposed to what I had drafted.
Hmm.
And we had a, about a four-hour, uh, I want to say, maybe not four-hour, but like three-hour-long meeting where uh, pretty much most of it was just debating this leadership structure. And ultimately, I had to make a couple of concessions
Okay.
to get the system that I thought was going to be the most beneficial. And that's exactly what happened. I was able to, you know, reach across the aisle, you know, come to terms with, you know, with uh, some concessions that I could make, so that we could get what needed to be done, done. And that's ultimately, you know, we ended up with a unanimous vote uh, going for uh, a slightly amended version of what I had drafted. So it's something that I'm very proud of, and it's an accomplishment that I feel like really shows my leadership style.
Yep.
Where I want to work with people. I'm tired of people not working together.
Yep.
Because that's how we get nothing done. So we need to actually reach across the aisle, be willing to compromise, and be willing to work together to push our communities forward, and especially on budget issues, like you said. Everyone wants their, everyone wants their peace, but there's things that we just need to get done. And when it comes to things like public safety in our county, that's where it's gonna be, it's gonna be a fight. But we have to, you know, be able to work with people ultimately.
Yeah, yeah. This is a little off-topic, but there's a push in um, union organizing right now, because I've, I've heard it and I've seen it, where the idea is that we should um, begin to share our salaries so that we can um, hold management accountable for, you know, how people are So that we can hold management accountable for, you know, how people are being paid. I just was curious to your thoughts on that, you know? I have my thoughts, but I was just curious.
Yeah. So I mean, I have always been one to believe that sharing what you make is important. You know, that's how we know that we're being compensated fairly. And that there isn't, you know, discrepancies for reasons that are out of, you know, our control. Based on our gender, race, ethnicity, things like that. There are subconscious things that happen, you know, for when employers go and hire people on. And that's how you end up with things like the wage gap. And that's, that's a major issue. And I feel like discussing, openly discussing wages is one way that we can combat that. Now, in our union drive, one of the biggest things that we agreed on to put into our constitution was that the salary of any on-staffed union employee would be no more than what the contract, than what the contract average salary would be for the workers in the building. So we're fighting for $30 an hour as a starting pay for our workers.
That's dope.
So, yeah, so an employee of the union, a full-time employee of the union will make no more than what the average worker in our building makes. We believe that that aligns the interests of, you know, on-staffed union representatives with the people who are actually working in the building. And it keeps everybody more accountable. So that's kind of, that's how we operate and that's how we've decided that we want to run our union.
Yeah. When, when I was first, when I first heard about that, see, and I'm old school. And so I'm, I'm learning that I have to like think about things differently, just because I used to. So I was like, should I? Is this okay? But, but you're right. We're holding everybody accountable. You know, we want to hold on to what we know because we think we got, you know, the, the, and it's what Volan was talking about. Well, we, we feel like we have the ultimate peace and I don't want anybody else to get it. But yeah, if we share, then we're getting that information now. But Steve, you've been very, you've been successful at passing ordinances. And, and you will be writing ordinances again as commissioner. Talk about how you were able to get things passed and how were you able to work? You, you never had to work across the aisle, but you had to have worked with people who disagree with you.
Oh yeah, big time. And so the, the past two terms, we had a mayor who was of Bloomington, who was quite progressive, but also a bit of an authoritarian. And he advanced a giant annexation plan after his first year. That really got the dander up of the county and everybody beyond that. And the, the, talking earlier about what you said about how the, the general assembly likes to erode home rule. The annexation process is one of the longest mandated processes that a locality can do. We had started in February and by, we were going to be going until the end of May to evaluate his proposal. Halfway through it, in the final, final day of the budget session in 2017. The general assembly advances legislation, it's totally illegal, that nullifies Bloomington's annexation. You're not allowed to do a law against one person or municipality. And the city sued and won, but didn't win until December 2020. I was president of the city council when we found out. Anyway, this mayor, what could be difficult and the commissioners fought with him. But, you know, like you have to get over the fact that you don't like the leaders you're working with. You've got to find a way to find common ground. All I wanted that mayor to do, I told him at the beginning of his term, the only thing you can do that will really offend me is that you don't call me back when I call. I don't care if we disagree and everything, just call me back. And to his credit, he always called me back. Other than that, we just had to negotiate stuff. And so I got legislation passed that sometimes against his wishes. Sometimes with his cooperation, two things that I'm really proud of. I passed a law last year against the mayor's wishes. That was nine zero, that opened up Bloomington Transit to outside the city limits for the first time in its 40 year history. So now the county can directly benefit from, if they, if they could have, find the funds to help us provide service outside the city limits. You know, we can serve the county. I also, the other thing I did with the mayor. I told him when he wanted to raise an economic development local income tax, I said, if, if at least a quarter of it doesn't go to transit, you don't have my vote. And to this day, a quarter of that new tax goes to transit. The transit budget went from 10 million to 14 million dollars with that, that vote. And I couldn't be prouder of it. So I'm really a proud supporter of transit. Transit makes more housing more affordable. If you can get it up and running, going everywhere, as you're seeing in Indianapolis with the blue line, we're getting our own line, a rapid transit line called the green line. That'll go across Bloomington east, west within a year or two, thanks partly to that tax. So, you know, I didn't always agree with the mayor, but I knew how to work with him. I wish that the current county commissioners could say the same, but they, they don't seem to want to work with anybody, including their fellow county elected officials. So I'm for a change.
One of the things I'm noticing about both of you is that you, you both have a unique ability, the unique ability to look at things holistically. Was that, is that a learned trait or is it just something innate in, in who you are as humans?
It's not unique, hopefully, because if it's just us, then I fear for the world. I think that you and many other people have the ability to look holistically at things. But it's, it's, you have to decide at some point, either you want to be vindicated in your opinion or you want to get something done. So if you want agreement, you have to take a step back from your ego and you have to say, I'm sick of fighting. I just want to know what's the minimum we can agree on. And when you start there, you know, you can build an agreement. But if you start from, you're going to recognize that I'm right and I'm going to win. That doesn't work.
Yeah. Hunter?
Yeah. You know, I think that it's something where naturally, a lot of people want to stand firm on their position and they want to, you know, they want to like Steve said, vindicate themselves on what they believe in. And, you know, we, what we have to do is that we have to, you know, humble ourselves in a way to say, listen, we need to actually make change. And part of that is working with people and understanding that we're not always going to get our way. You know, we are not a toddler throwing, you know, temper tantrum in a Walmart. We are, you know, we are like, you know, we are elected officials. Right. We're elected officials that are trying to do work for our community. So it's, it's so important that, you know, we look at things from this big picture and not just, you know, zoom in on one particular issue that we may have opposing views on. That's where, you know, like I said, with my experience working in this union drive. I have very different opinions than some of the other core members of this drive. Yet at the same time, there are always things that we agree on. And that's that workers need representation and that we need to stand up to mega corporations, you know? We can always come back to those two points and then build up from there and come to this common ground and agreement.
If I could just say one more thing, it's about, it's about pronouns and I'm not talking about those kinds of pronouns. The pronoun I, can you avoid saying the word I and always replace it with the word we? If, if you can find a way to not use the word I in a sentence and always be referring to whatever problem is, what, how can we solve this problem? You're going to be better off. Everyone will be better off. But it all starts with avoiding the first person personal pronoun.
Absolutely. You definitely want to build those horizontal relationships versus those vertical relationships. You know, this is one of my first, only shows where I didn't like dive into like the regular democratic talking points. Because you guys have a different, you, you guys brought about a different energy of community that I just kind of latched in on. Before I switch off to ask you guys where people can find you, is there a, an issue or a topic or an ordinance or a bill? Or something that you want to highlight? And don't talk about your podcast yet, Steve. We gonna talk about that in a minute. All right. Is there anything else like, because usually I talk about policies a lot, but you guys just had a different vibe about you tonight. So, you know, Steve, is there something that you, you, you want to make sure people know, you know, why you're running and what you want to tackle when you get elected?
The basic thing is the solution to climate change, to sustainability, to social justice starts with, and this is going to be out a little bit out of left field. Living closer together, physically living closer together. We can't afford sprawl. It does create all kinds of damage. And, you know, I think that density is good. We don't need it everywhere. But where we have developed, we should be trying to find ways to densify it. That will reduce dependence on the car. It will bring people closer together. It will save people money. And we, one subtle way to do that is actually to think about car storage. What can you do as a developer to devote less land to a garage, less land to parking on the street in your development? Let alone what can you do to build something densely, you know, multi-story on a city street? But I would say that everything I do is based on the idea that cities are not bad things. Cities are good things. Walkable places are good things. They're better for everyone. They're better for the environment. And, you know, like the things that I've talked about tonight, transit, housing. They all start with, you have to start with that initial assumption that the urban form is not a bad thing. That we can't all afford to live rurally. We can't all have five acres and a giant yard and all the room we want. But most people don't need that. They just need a foot on the ground. They need a one bedroom apartment that they can afford. They need to be able to make the rent. And all the, the key to that is densifying and building like a city.
I love it. Hunter?
Yeah, pretty much everything that I run on, you know, there's three main points that I really have built my campaign on. It's enhancing our public safety network, expanding housing opportunities and attracting good paying jobs. And all that comes back around to, I'm 26 years old. I'm, I'm younger, you know? So I have lived through plenty, like way too many, once in a lifetime events. You know, especially when it comes to economics. And what that has done is that has put people of my generation and future generations in a huge disadvantage of, you know, being able to buy a home, even being able to make rent on your own. And having a good paying job, the lack of union work, you know, with pensions and good benefits. Most people my age don't even understand what it is, which is, wow, it's, it's, it's so unfortunate. So, you know, what I want to do is I have an eight-year-old daughter. And I want to make sure that the Dearborn County that she lives in, when she's older, she can buy her first home in, you know, before she buys her first home. She can have that apartment, you know, that one bedroom apartment that she can live in while she, you know, while she works and saves. Yeah. I want her to be able to, you know, get around town, you know, safely. It wasn't until relatively recently that we even had like Uber or Lyft that would come out here, you know? So it's, when you talk about public transit, it's non-existent out here. And as we continue to develop, to develop this area, I really believe that Dearborn County can be an economic hub. We just have to put the work in. And as we grow, we need to make sure that we're planning for the future, you know? Building housing developments that are affordable, not luxury, you know, apartments that are costing almost $2,000 a month. That are, you know, that sit right across the street from a jail, weirdly enough.
For your behind right there. Just stack them up to each other. Everybody stacked up. I mean, that's, that's communal living. Y'all create communal living. Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh yeah. So yeah, just, I want to create a county that is affordable, that people can get good paying jobs in. So that people of my generation and future generations to come can have prosperity. So that's.
I love it. I love it, guys. Thank you so much for joining me right here on Turn Left. Turn Left, guys, listen, donate to these candidates. I like them. I like them a lot. And they brought in, they, they was, they was getting the feels, you know what I'm saying? They was getting me in my feels. But you know, them girl dads do that to me. Y'all know how I am about the girl dads. I'm not gonna play. So Hunter, tell the people where they can find you.
Yeah, you can find me on my website, huntercollins.org. You can find me also on Facebook, Friends of Hunter Collins. I'm still working on setting up a Twitter, but you can also find me on Instagram at Hunter for Indiana. And yeah, that's, that's pretty much everywhere I think I am.
Okay. And do you have any events coming up?
I do. I have a Cheers to Democracy event happening on March 15th. It's going to be at Great Crescent Brewery here in Aurora, Indiana. Starts at 6:00 PM. Come out, have a drink with me and I want to hear about, you know, the issues that are important to you.
All right. Well, I believe that you're going to be very, very successful. I, I like your tenor. I like the way that you express yourself and the way you explain things. I think you're going to do very, very well in your community. I really, really do. All right, Steve, tell the people where they can find you.
All right. My website is volan.org/vote. Just had a campaign launch a couple nights ago, still preparing other events. You can also find me at, yes, my podcast, I have one too. It's called The 812 Show. And you can find it at the812show.org. And every day, basically five days a week, I do a half hour interview broadcast, podcast where I talk to somebody involved with city policy, an elected official, an appointed official, member of a border commission, member of an NGO that, that touches on city policy. So people can hear how I work with people and how I talk with people every day on the 812.
Okay. And so where can they find the 812?
At the812show.org or wherever you get podcasts. Just look for the 812. If you need to put my last name in there and you'll, you'll find it at Apple, Spotify and every other place.
So what, I gotta ask, what made you decide to do a podcast, bro?
Because for 20 years, one of the things I did the most as a city council member was explain how city government works to people. I spent a lot of time just explaining it. This podcast is an explainer. It's like, why do you, like, today I interviewed the former director of planning. And asked him, you know, how planning works, even though I know how it works. It was more for the sake of people who don't pay as close attention and who need stuff. They're perfectly intelligent, but they don't have the time or the experience with city government. And city government needs to be unpacked and demystified. Same with county government, same with any kind of government. The, the, I mean, even I, I can't fathom what happens at the state level. And I don't even know how I'd begin to go about trying to navigate the state house. But I can certainly help you navigate city hall and I hope that I'll get the chance to help you navigate the county courthouse.
And see, this is the joy. You know, I tell people all the time, there is enough sun for everybody to shine. I, first of all, I'm going to be waiting for my invitation, even though I am not that, you know, good at what's going on in the city government. Cause I, I can look at where it says Dearborn County Council and Monroe County Commissioner and still get it messed up. So.
I'm gonna find a way to get you on the show.
There's gotta be a way. But that being said, you know, one of the, the, the things that my podcast attempts to do is just to elevate. I don't even know how to say elevate, introduce people to Democrats in places they didn't think they had Democrats. And so I love that there is a, yours is probably more nonpartisan and it's more focused on policy and how the thing actually works. But here's, this is what Turn Left is all about, is to bring you the information so that you can be, be a better informed voter, a better informed constituent. And I am going to promote the 812. I ain't heard it yet, but I will. It's on five days a week. He, he got time for a five day a week.
I just interviewed Gloria Howell, the director of the Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Birthday Celebration Commission. It was another great conversation. I interviewed department heads, you know, like it's, it, it's, it's a pretty wide ranging show and darn it Dana, we're going to figure out a way to have something. You can talk about city of Bloomington policy with me somehow.
I'll figure it out, but you, you seem to fix the thing that you, that got my goat and that was that ridiculous time that y'all.
And that's, they're, they, it's not stopping them from going ridiculous again. It is a new council. I hope they're gonna find a way to rein it in.
I, I literally showed up because I was trying to impress a young lady and I thought, oh, I'll go and hang out. I told her, I'm never doing that again.
I could have told you. I could have told you not to do that.
Guys, thank you so much for joining me on Turn Left. This is a fantastic conversation. I am really energized and I am stoked and I wish both of you the best of luck. And also I gotta tell people, you know, Volan has a primary. And I, as, as my congressman always says, iron sharpens iron and competition is good. If I didn't get his opponents on during the. If I didn't get his opponents on during the primary, I apologize because you know what? There's only so many Thursdays in a year. It's not, and I, and this doesn't mean that I've endorsed him, but I try to get as many candidates on as I possibly can. And I'm also trying to make sure that I get a, a good geographic, diverse group of people, cause we got ninety-two counties. Yes, sir.
You, you did get five Turn Left Thursdays in Black History Month. It won't happen again for twenty-eight years. So I'm glad that we got in on Leap Day.
I know. And, and here's the thing, and I had to cancel one of them because my congressman, my congressional candidate from the ninth district got sick and he, we had to cancel. So it, it happens, it happens. But this is, this is the joy of doing the show. You create these relationships and you can offer, find ways to help people. And that being said, guys, click on their donate link. They need your help, right? Make sure you give, try to give five bucks, whatever you can. I know times are hard, but these, these folks wanna represent you. And, and giving, donating to them is not giving to Steve or Hunter. You're investing in your community by making sure that you have great representation. And I want you to do that for the folks that are running for the state house because, you know, this, it's, it's a critical time. It is a critical time and we've gotta be cognizant of who is representing us. Today we found out that the particular ordinance or the particular bill that denies parents the ability to seek health care for their transgender youth is back in effect. So we are now telling parents that they don't have the parental rights that other parents have to provide the necessary care. In some cases, that transgender care can be the, the difference between life and death for that young person. So these are the type of bills that are coming down, these culture war bills. And until we decide that we wanna be serious about who is representing us at all levels of government, these things are gonna continue to happen and our liberties are gonna be chipped away. Hunter's daughter has less rights right now than my mother, well, no, not my mama, but me, you know? So think about that. And continue to tune in so that you can learn about the candidates who are on every week. Yes, I have more candidates coming up and I love talking to folks and getting to know them. And I appreciate that you tune in and listen to the show. So stay tuned, enjoy the rest, this few more hours of Black History Month and be ready to turn the page to Women Histories Month. And until then, I will holler at y'all next time. Peace. Turn Left is the property of Black Girl IT Solutions. Executive producer, Indiana's own Dana Black. Music by www.bensound.com.